Four at seven o'clock PM for the purpose of transacting any and all business. Notice this meeting was posted on March 12th, 2024 at 2:56 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is live on SATV. It is actually live on YouTube, I think, right now because there is an issue with the live feed unless technological issues interrupt the transmission. Counselors absent, Counselor Stott, Counselor Hapworth presided. Counselor Varela moved to dispense with the reading of the record of the previous meeting. All those in favor, all opposed, the matter carries. President Hapworth requested that everyone please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Merkel.
The Salem City Council honors this land as Namkeg or fishing place. For generations of Namkeg people from the Pawtucket Band of the Massachusetts Tribe lived and passed through for centuries, we acknowledge this is unceded indigenous land and also acknowledge the Massachusetts Tribe who continue to honor and hold this land into the present. Salem City Council is committed to having ongoing meaningful dialogue with indigenous peoples who have presence in Salem in order to dismantle the legacies of oppression and inequities that persist today. Public testimony. Public testimony is not to exceed 15 minutes. Public testimony is not a public hearing or a question and answer period. Sign must occur 30 minutes prior to the meeting. The president shall, depending on the number of speakers, set a time limit not to exceed three minutes, which each individual presenting testimony must abide. So we have 10 folks signed up today. So that gives everybody a minute thirty. I'm going to call the people who are here in the room first and then we'll move on to Zoom. So first up is Scott Trueheart. Scott, if you're here, you may make your way to the podium. Move on to Ellen Simpson. Ellen, if you're here, you—there she is.
Hi, my name is Ellen Simpson, and I live at 1 Geneva Street. I'm here in opposition to the camping ban. The housing crisis has increased the numbers of people experiencing homelessness, and it's a terrible reality that people are living outside. When I hear stories of how people end up living on the street, it's not hard to understand how it can happen. It would be so easy to slip through the cracks when problems arise if you don't have family support or if you struggle with an addiction or mental illness and don't have access to medical care. It's not ideal to have people living outside, but they've found a way to survive and create a community. If what we really want is to help them, taking that away from them is not the place to begin. Rather than a camping ban, start with a permanent place to live. It doesn't need to cost millions of dollars, and there are models in other communities for how this can work and be cost effective. We would not be starting from scratch. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Up next is Jess Tower.
Hi, my name is Jess Tower, and I live at 11232 Kirk Bride Drive in Danvers, but I work with Witch City Action in Salem. And prior to my move on March 1st, I lived in Salem most of my life, and tonight I want to speak out against the proposed no camping ordinance. The people who are proposing this ordinance have been luckier than a lot of others. I know this because you wouldn't propose something harmful to your own community, and that's just what Tent City is, a community like any other. As Skylar, also from Witch City Action, wrote in an opinion piece in the Salem News recently, Tent City was formed to rally around a chronically unhoused black man who has been homeless for over 10 years. The encampment by Wendy's formed as a way for his community to protect him. Tent City was literally formed out of community. The encampment is not currently in full agreement, but this is a partial list of what they would like to see instead of an encampment sweep. A free-to-camp space, trash collection, and access to public bathrooms, access to services including healthcare. These are, of course, rough draft ideas and more so included to be thought-provoking rather than be a definite. The only way definite demands could happen would be if the city tried to show they care, maybe just a little. There are, of course, many ideas out there about what to do instead of sweeping encampments. Sweeps are violent and literally cause trauma. If this ordinance is not passed and—
Thank you, Jess. Thank you, Jess. Thank you. A minute, a minute thirty for each.
Okay, sorry.
You can also send your comments into the city council and call each of us. Up next, we have Ezio Cattagiri.
Hello, my name is Ezio Cattagiri. I'm on Two and a Half Rope Street, right here in Salem. I'm here because I believe in community. I think we all believe in community, which is why we are here. Without community, I—we're on our own. Who can we trust? Who can we get help from? Who can I laugh with? This is why I'm speaking out against the proposed camping ban, which is essentially the first step to be able to forcibly sweep the area along the South River and further disrupt, displace, and destroy the community of unhoused people currently residing there. Now, I agree, something needs to be done so the unhoused aren't living in tents along the river, but a sweep of their community is not the answer, even if we provide emergency temporary shelter and storage. One community sweeping another community out of sight is not the answer or the solution. The damage to both parties is considerable. We can find another solution that maintains and supports both communities. This ordinance is for one community and destroys another. The entire Salem community can do much better than this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cattagiri. Next is Steve Kapantis. Steve, not in person. Up next is Dee Tashara.
Thank you. It's 2024, and anyone watching the misery trickling down can see that the system can't resolve the same contradictions that it creates. The calamities created by the capitalist system continue to intensify, but we currently live under this political economic system, so we have to work with it. Unfortunately, we seem to fear innovation and lack political will around here. The developers do as they will, winning bids of tremendous profits with little regulatory ordinances to ensure there is no one who needs to camp, as their method of having a roof over their heads. Massachusetts was voted best state to live in by some financier publication last year, topping the list for livability, housing costs, income growth, education rate, and quality of hospitals. Our reality tells a different story. By the state's own account, there were around 35,000 workers in Massachusetts without a dwelling in 2022. How many of these houseless workers live in a tent in Salem? From 2022 to 2024, I assume that this number has continued to skyrocket. Some say that people can find shelter and that they are lucky to be in a right-to-shelter liberal state, but upon some investigation, we can compare today's reality to the 19th century with an analysis of the conditions of the working class in London written by Frederick Engels. Here, we can find that despite significant economic growth since its time, the rot from profiteers reeks just the same. I'll submit the quote. Recently, there was a COVID-19 outbreak at a shelter nearby. Every day, we're bombarded with anti-homeless propaganda on cable—
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Tashara.
I'll submit. I'm not a mister.
Thank you, Dee. Up next is Caitlin Trichome.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Trichome. I'm a Beverly resident, but I work at Salem's Arrival Program and Witch City Action, supporting the unhoused community in Salem. I'm here to speak out about the No Camping Ordinance Amendment and why it's criminalizing the unhoused. Encampments provide safety, community, and companionship. Tent City or South River encampment takes care of each other. When the encampment flooded, residents and local advocates helped to clean up the area and regularly collect the trash because the city does not think houseless people have the right to trash cans or regular trash pickup. If we're really worried about the health and safety of the encampment, we need to provide access to healthcare providers and other service providers. We must provide access to public restrooms, mobile showers, period products, hand-washing statements, and pest control to maintain a safe environment, all supported by the National Healthcare for the Homeless Council. Residents should have access to clean drinking water and allow for food distribution, and as a public health professional, I cannot support this ordinance of being used to justify making it be illegal to be unhoused in Salem. Residents, Beverly passed a similar no camping ordinance in 2014 that doesn't allow anyone to camp or store personal property and has resulted in the surveillance and displacement of the unhoused community. Both area shelters, River House and Life Bridge, are full. Salem will be taking away lifesaving resources like tents and sleeping bags, especially in times of extreme cold and heat when people have nowhere else to go. When Boston passed their ordinance to sweep mass encas, it ripped people from vital community resources like social workers and therapists they relied on.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you. I'll send the rest.
Thank you. Next is Rebecca Dos Santos. Dos Santos.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Dos Santos. I'm the general manager at the Wendy's. And as we are empathetic to the situation, housing, more specifically affordable housing, isn't an easy thing to come by in many areas of Massachusetts, and Salem is no different. People and employees feel unsafe. I've had the people—I've had people quit because they have been approached, harassed, or taunted by the encampment. We've had an issue not that long ago where some of the teenagers are provoking the community as well, none of which we want to see. However, at the end of the day, it comes down to safety. We have found drug needles on our property, trash in the multitudes of bags, shopping carts, pallets, plastic bins, and just regular trash that doesn't get disposed of. We've had to lock our dumpsters because people have been going in there to go through the trash, dispose the trash, or use the area as our own personal bathroom. There's a larger problem in conjunction with all the rubbish that has left around and not disposed of properly. We have had issues in our bathroom, once again, needles, overdoses, people thinking it's a bathhouse, and taking sponge showers, empty nip bottles left behind as well. Recently, almost two weeks ago, we had two different encounters almost simultaneously inside the restaurant that resulted in two no trespass notices given when, in fact, it should have or could have been four. There are verbal arguments inside that sometimes turn physical. They look for a warm place to be but also continuously harass people inside and outside the restaurant by soliciting money and/or food from our paying customers or walker-bys. They have also been seen going through our trash cans inside looking for empty cups or bags that contain food and that hasn't been consumed. At the end of it, all I just want is for my employees to be safe, customers in the community feel safe, and grab something to eat and be able to walk along the riverway in peace and safety.
Thank you, Rebecca. David Pizzeni.
The affordable housing problem in the city is actually easier to fix, but unfortunately, this council for many, many years has been more interested in selling off Salem to people who want to put in high-end condos and high-end apartments. This needs to stop. We also need to stop all the licensing to it, all the permits given to these folks, plain and simple. If they want to develop in Salem, they need to start developing affordable housing. And affordable housing needs to be done off of minimum wage, not the HUD median income standard that has never worked since it was created. Affordable means a one-bedroom can be afforded by one person making minimum wage. This is a very simple fix, which is why you also have to stop giving all the licensing and support to all the people who are just taking advantage of our city. Again, it's a very simple fix. You want to develop in Salem, you bring true affordable housing. And you need to enforce the people who promised affordable housing, got all the tax breaks, like the $3 million you all want to give to the people who get $700,000 for the small condos over here at the Bricks, and say, "Well, bring us affordable housing, real affordable housing," because your own clerks—
Thank you, David.
—live downstairs, can't afford to live here.
Thank you, David.
Can't afford to live here.
Next, we will move to the Zoom. So we'll start with Scott Trueheart. Scott, if you are joining us via Zoom, please use the raise hand function, and we'll allow you to unmute yourself. Move on to Madeline Chopoff. Madeline, if you are joining us via Zoom, please use the raise hand function. We'll allow you to unmute yourself. Saskia James. Saskia, if you are joining us via Zoom, please use the raise hand function. We'll allow you to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me? Am I being heard?
Go ahead and speak.
Oh, thank you. My name's Saskia Van James, and I am speaking this evening in regards to a proposal for an ordinance that's been brought before you this evening to support a commission, and this commission is part of repairing harm from a racial caste system. The city of Cambridge, if you're unaware, passed an ordinance for this commission in December of last year, and this was brought forth by community members saying that there's no such thing as multiple races. There's only one race, the human race, and our government needs to stop pushing race-based ideology onto people and dividing our communities. I am an educator and a human rights advocate, and I educated the city council about transitional justice, so they decided to pass this ordinance to establish this commission as part of repairing harm from a racial caste system. I am asking for you to please vote in favor for this ordinance to be passed to your subcommittee, where it can go through further review, and I myself am more than happy to speak with you in regards to transitional justice and racial caste. That way, your sub—you—the committee is well-educated and has legal understanding on transitional justice and how it's defined, as well as reparations is not a check, and anything financial would be a federal conversation. That cannot—that burden cannot be put upon the municipality. This ordinance was passed with the support of Mayor Siddiqui, now councilwoman, Mayor Simmons, and Counselors—
Thank you, Saskia.
—as well understandably by the city of Cambridge. Thank you.
And we'll just go to Steve Kapantis, just see if he's joining us via Zoom. Steve, if you're joining us via Zoom, please use the raise hand function. Thank you all for taking the time to come in and speak with us. Again, for anyone who'd like to, we are available via email and phone, and most of us are available by meeting, so I'm happy to—happy to continue this conversation.
We have a hearing from National Grid to install one single-owned pole on Congress Street near the intersection of Harbor Street.
The request by National Grid to install one single-owned pole on Congress Street, those appearing in favor, please make your way to the podium or use the raise hand function on Zoom.
Sabita Mahabir Sheehy, representing National Grid, 44 River Street, Beverly, Massachusetts. The pole is to re-feed two circuits, one of them being a backup, one of them being a main one in this particular area of town.
Any questions for Sabita, the council? Anyone else appearing in favor, please make your way to the podium or use the raise hand function on Zoom. Seeing none, we'll now move to those—
I'm not sure if it's favor or not.
Mr. Pizzeni, you want to make your way to the podium?
I clearly answered. Who is this post benefiting? Specifically, is it going to the new housing development that was built on Harbor Street? Is it benefiting them or not? That needs to be clearly stated as to who this pole that's going to, while they build it, will interfere with traffic and where people can park and go about their lives. Is it benefiting that new development? Yes or no?
Thank you, Mr. Pizzeni. Sabita, would you want to speak to what the—what the reason for the pole is at Harvard— or Congress and Harbor?
We're removing some aerial cable, older cable, and we're putting in open wire construction. That's the only reason this pole is going in.
Thank you. Anybody else appearing in opposition? Please make your way to the podium or use the raise hand function on Zoom. Seeing none, Counselor Jurslow.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I did go out to Congress and Harbor Street, and I did check out the poles. It's not blocking any parking issues or anything. It's not blocking any pathways. Poles there definitely need to be cleaned up, and thank you for doing that. I move to close the public hearing.
Counselor Jurslow moves to close the public hearing. All those in favor, all opposed, the matter carries. Counselor Jurslow.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move to this be granted.
Counselor Jurslow moves this be granted. Any discussion? On the motion by Counselor Jurslow to grant the request by National Grid to install one single-owned pole on Congress Street, all those in favor, all opposed, the matter carries. Further hearings.
We have a hearing from National Grid to install conduits on Congress Street near the intersection of Harbor Street.
On the request by National Grid to install conduits on Congress Street, those appearing in favor, please make your way to the podium or use the raise hand function on Zoom.
Sabita Mahabir Sheehy, representing National Grid, 44 River Street, Beverly, Massachusetts. This is just the underground portion of the previous matter.
Any questions for Sabita? Anyone else appearing in favor? Mr. Pizzeni, are you appearing in favor?
I don't know if favor or not.
So why don't we wait? What—Mr.—Mr. Pizzeni, why don't we wait? Mr. Pizzeni?
New house.
Mr. Pizzeni? Why don't we wait so we get to the opposition, which is coming right up? Let's just follow the process here, okay?
Or against. So I'm stepping up. Get a clear answer. Is it benefiting that new housing development?
I think you got—I think you may have had your answer in the last question, Mr. Pizzeni.
I've given a clear answer. It's a yes or no. Is it benefiting the new housing development? Yes or no?
No.
Now move to those appearing in opposition. Those appearing in opposition, please make your way to the podium or use the raise hand function on Zoom. There's an Eric on Zoom.
Hello, my name is Eric Dizel. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Eric.
I own the building on the corner of Congress and Harbor, where the chiropractor and barber shop is and the New Delhi. I was told years ago that these lines would be put underground. My tenants can actually reach out the window and grab these telephone pole lines. They actually came years ago and covered them in rubber. I don't want to take up a bunch of time in the meeting, but I was wondering if I could get a contact with someone with National Grid to express my concerns tomorrow or the next day. Again, my building is on the corner of Congress and Harbor, very close to where this pole is being put in. I'm not sure if they're planning on putting those wires underground or not. Thank you.
Yeah, if you want to address that, but also, Eric, I believe you could email Counselor Jurslow, and she could get you in contact with National Grid as well, but Sabita, do you have any response to that?
If he emails the counselor, she has my contact.
Sorry, Eric, just look for Counselor Jurslow's contact information on the city website. Send her a note, and then she'll connect you.
I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Counselor Jurslow.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move to close the public hearing.
Counselor Jurslow moves to close the public hearing. All those in favor, all opposed, the hearing is closed. Counselor Jurslow.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move this to be granted.
Counselor Jurslow moves this be granted. On the motion that Counselor Jurslow to grant the request by National Grid to install conduits on Congress Street, all those in favor, all opposed, the matter carries.
Thank you.
Appointments and reappointments.
We have held from the last meeting the mayor's reappointments with the following terms. Jack Butterworth to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, expired 4/1/2026. Jonathan Burke and Sarah Tarbet to the Planning Board, to term of expiration 3/1/2029.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for confirmation by roll call vote.
Counselor Varela moves for confirmation by roll call vote. Under discussion?
Thank you, Counselor Hapworth. I'd just like to personally thank Mr. Butterworth, Mr. Burke, and Sarah Tarbet for their continued work on these very important boards.
Any further discussion? On the reappointment of Jack Butterworth to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board and Jonathan Burke and Sarah Tarbet to the Planning Board, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jurslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Marcello?
Yes.
Counselor Proznuski?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Reappointment of Jack Butterworth to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board and Jonathan Burke and Sarah Tarbet to the Planning Board. We have 10 counselors voting, 10 in favor, none opposed, the matter carries. Further appointments or reappointments?
We have held from the last meeting the mayor's appointment of Rommel Kidd to the Salem Housing Authority with a term to expire February 22nd, 2029.
Counselor Harvey.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move to confirm this by roll call vote.
Counselor Harvey moves for confirmation by roll call vote. Any discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion on the appointment of Rommel Kidd to the Salem—I'm sorry. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I had the benefit of talking to Mr. Kidd a few weeks ago. Really impressed with his perspective on housing in general, and although this is not affecting my vote, he's agreed to work with me and some children in Salem who have challenges in the future, and I think he'll be a great addition to the—to the board.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the appointment of Rommel Kidd to the Salem Housing Authority, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jurslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Marcello?
Yes.
Counselor Proznuski?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
Sorry. And Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Going too fast.
On the appointment of Rommel Kidd to the Salem Housing Authority, we have 10 counselors voting, 10 in favor, none opposed, the matter carries. Counselor Harvey. Suspension of— If Rommel's here or not. You'd like to suspend the rules to allow Mr. Kidd—
Suspend the rules and he would like to speak.
Seeing no objection.
I really have not much to say, but I want to thank everybody for their vote confidence. I look forward to serving. If anyone wants to reach me, I'll be around.
Other appointments or reappointments?
We have held from the last meeting the mayor's appointment of Betsy Frederick to the—to Salem Sustainability, Energy, and Resilience Committee with a term to expire in February 22nd, 2027.
Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move that we confirm by roll call vote.
Counselor Cohen moves for confirmation by roll call vote. Under discussion?
Thank you, President Hapworth. I've known Ms. Frederick for a while. She's got extensive engineering knowledge, which will be really helpful to the—to CIRC, and she's done a lot of great work with SOA. People are aware that they were instrumental in the CBA with the Wynn Terminal, and she was kind enough to join Counselor Proznuski and I at the Willow Pipe, and really appreciate that, and I look forward to what she's going to do on the committee.
Any further discussion? On the appointment of Betsy Frederick to the Sustainability, Energy, and Resiliency Committee, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jurslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Marcello?
Yes.
Counselor Proznuski?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
On the appointment of Betsy Frederick to the Sustainability, Energy, and Resiliency Committee, we have 10 counselors voting, 10 in favor, none opposed, the matter carries. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move that we suspend the rules to give Ms. Frederick an opportunity to speak to the council.
Counselor Cohen moves to suspend the rule, seeing no objection.
Thank you, Counselor Cohen and all of you. I look forward to the privilege of working on the committee. Thanks for answering your vote. Thanks for answering your vote.
Further appointments or reappointments?
And the mayor's appointment of Stephen Larick to serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals with a term to expire September 14th, 2024.
Counsel Jerslow.
Thank you, President Hathworth. I vote that we hold under the rules.
Counsel Jerslow moves to that this be held under the rules. All those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Further appointments or reappointments?
With the mayor's appointment of Emmy Lou Manuel to serve on the Bicycling and Shared Path Advisory Committee with a term to expire September 14th, 2026.
Counsel Harvey.
Thank you, President Hathworth. I move to this be held under the rules.
Counsel Harvey moves this be held under the rules. All those in favor? All opposed? The matter's held under the rules. Further appointments or reappointments?
We have the mayor's appointment of Mark Paris to serve on the Design Review Board with a term to expire December 8th, 2026.
Counsel Jerslow.
Thank you, President Hathworth. I move to receive and file.
Counsel Jerslow moves this be received and filed. All those opposed? I'm saying all those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries.
And if you're awake.
Further appointments and reappointments?
We have the mayor's reappointment of Donald Famico to serve as a constable of the City of Salem with the following term to expire March 14th, 2027.
Counsel Harvey.
Thank you, President Hathworth. I move to receive and file.
Counsel Harvey moves this be received and filed. All those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Communications from the mayor.
We have an order that the sum of $52,973.59 be approved within the Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Leave Buyback to be expended for the contractual buybacks of employees from the Salem Police Department, Salem Fire Department, and other various Ask Me Local 18, 18 departments.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hathworth. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counsel Merkel moves to suspend the rules, seeing no objection. Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hathworth. I move for adoption.
Counsel Merkel moves for adoption. Under discussion.
Uh, thank you, President Hathworth. Uh, these are contractual agreements for buybacks.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counsel Merkel's motion for adoption, the sum of $52,973.59 be approved within the Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Leave Buyback Account. All those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have the sum and we have an order that the sum of $16,625 be approved within the Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Leave Buyback Account to be expended for the contractual buyback of an employee from the Salem School Department.
Counsel Merkel.
Oh, sorry. It's the Salem Teachers Union. Apologize.
Thank you, President Hathworth. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counsel Merkel moves to suspend the rules, seeing no objection. Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hathworth. I move for adoption.
Counsel Merkel moves for adoption. Under discussion.
Uh, thank you, President Hathworth. Again, these are contractual agreements for buybacks.
On Counsel Merkel's motion for adoption that the sum of $16,625 be approved within the Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Leave Buyback Account, all those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order that the sum of $8,720 is hereby appropriated from the fund balance reserved for free cash account to the account listed below to fund agenda software training for the city council.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hathworth. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counsel Merkel moves to suspend the rules, seeing no objection. Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hathworth. I move for adoption.
Counsel Merkel moves for adoption. Under discussion.
Uh, thank you, President Hathworth. These funds are for onsite training for the agenda software for the clerk's office and also it includes additional virtual training for various departments. Using this agenda software will greatly benefit transparency in our city government. Um, I'm excited to see this happen and the plan is for this to happen in April or May.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counsel Merkel's motion for adoption, the sum of $8,720 is hereby appropriated from the fund balance reserved for appropriations free cash account for agenda software training. All those in favor? All opposed? The matter carries. And thank you to everybody who pushed that over the last few years. Further communications from the mayor.
We've an order to accept a donation from Biff Michaud to the, in the amount of $26,394 to the Salem Fire Department to purchase six thermal imager units. These funds will be deposited into the fire donation fund.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hathworth. I move for adoption.
Counsel Merkel moves for adoption. Under discussion.
Thank you, President Hathworth. Uh, I want to start by saying thank you to Biff, Biff Michelle uh from the Salem Witch Museum for this very generous donation, but to tell um the public a little bit about it. It's for the six thermal imager units for the Salem Fire Department and these thermal imagers are used daily for fire service. Uh, they are employed to search for lost victims and orient firefighters in heavy smoke and fire conditions and also extensively used for overheated electrical components. They are proven lifesavers and are an essential tool for the fire department and I want to express gratitude for this very generous donation.
Any further discussion? On Counsel Merkel's motion for adoption to accept the donation from Biff Michaud in the amount of $26,394 to the Salem Fire Department, all those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. And even though he said, specifically said he didn't want to be thanked, thank you, Biff. Further communications from the mayor? Counsel Cohen, I think we're on to page 15 here.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 24 by adding a new section relative to camping.
Uh, thank you, President Hathworth. I move that this is referred to the Committee on Public Health, Safety, and Environment.
Counsel Cohen moves to refer to the Committee on Public Health, Safety, and the Environment. Under discussion.
Thank you, President Hathworth. Um, the Public Health, Safety, and Environment Subcommittee will have a hearing sometime in the next two weeks. It will be posted uh on the city website and it will be a hybrid meeting. Um, the city staff will present to the council. The council will um weigh in, ask questions. We will have appropriate department heads uh at the meeting and then there will be a period that we will um enable public comment. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hathworth. Uh, I was wondering if it can be co, if it would be co-posted with Committee of the Whole?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Um, just for those who are watching here in person or live or at home, uh, we are not voting on this ordinance tonight. We're just voting to send it to committee. Um, it'll go to committee and we'll, yeah, have a chance to ask questions and discuss it in committee and then it will come back to the council at some point likely, um, which you'll continue throughout that entire process. You'll have opportunities to give feedback to the council. Um, on the motion to refer to committee of Public Health, Safety, and the Environment, all those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. I'm sorry. Co-posted. All those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Thank you. Further communications from the mayor.
We have three zoning ordinances. Um, the creation of Coastal Resilience Overlay District, amending zoning relative to the flood hazard overlay district, and a zoning map amendment relative to Section 2.2 districts by adding a new district to the table, Coastal Resiliency Overlay District.
Counsel Marcello.
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Planning Board to hold a joint public hearing.
Counsel Marcello moves to refer to the Planning Board to hold a joint public hearing. Under discussion.
Thank you, President. I'm really happy to see this and we've been working on this for almost two years. Um, and this immediately followed the work that was done on the Wetlands Ordinance. Um, there's uh, from the backup, you can see the list of people that have been involved in this. Um, myself and Counselor McCarthy were at the meetings along with a lot of city staff that weighed in, but also residents that um, that helped us out with it, residents that didn't know um environmental law, um, someone from Salem Sound Coast Watch. Um, it was just a wide array of people that were involved with this. The discussions were very detailed. Um, I, I have to say that Counsel McCarthy and I spent a lot of time listening and learning uh about this topic. Um, and so, you know, I'm, I am really looking forward to this coming before the two bodies. There were, I just want to point out that there were two public forums. Well, there was a public forum in April of 2023 and then there was a presentation to the Committee of the Whole last year. Um, and I will also point out that in the backup, there were some maps. Um, it's much better if you go on the website to thepublicinput.com/salemphod. You'll see an interactive map there that, that's very, very clearly indicates the areas um that are under the 2070 flood maps. Um, and so that's, it's important for everyone to be aware of those areas in Salem. Um, and I just want to point out that, that the purpose of the C-Rod is to help property owners to make better decisions about what they're building in these zones, right? To, to, to help them to understand that according to these maps, their property could be inundated um in storms. And so um to build a better, to build a better project, to build a better home, this is, this is homeowners also, um, to raise, to raise the residential levels up above that, above that flood zone. Um, so this is really important stuff and like all zoning, we have to balance between property owners' rights and um safety and rules that we're trying to put in place to help out the city. And so um I think this does it and I look forward to the conversation.
Further discussion. Counsel Cohen.
Uh, thank you, President Hathworth, and uh thank you to all the people, including um Counselors Marcello and former Counselor McCarthy for all the good work. Too many people in Salem know that it doesn't take uh a large storm to have huge consequences anymore and we really need to be a little bit quicker and better at adapting and I think these ordinances or, or changes to the ordinances will go a long way. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none. On Counsel Marcello's motion to refer the three zoning ordinances to the Planning Board to hold a joint public meeting, all those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor? Counsel Jerslow.
We have a resolution to for amendment to the tax increment finance agreement with Crowley Salem Wind Terminal.
Counsel Jerslow.
Thank you, President Hathworth.
Make sure you get real close to that mic.
Okay, where is the tax increment?
Wave the reading.
Motion to waive the reading. I see no objection.
Thank you. I move um for confirmation by roll call vote.
On Counsel Jerslow's motion for confirmation by roll call vote. Under discussion?
Thank you, President Hathworth. Um, for the past year, I'm sorry. For the past year, the city has been working tirelessly on the Community Benefits Act and TIF agreement with Crowley Wind. I commend the Planning Director Tom Daniel, Kate Newell Smith, and Daniel Collins of the Planning Trotment and many other community groups such as Salem Offshore Wind Alliance Group for all their hard work in putting these agreements together. This amendment here before us tonight will protect the city and also the tenants of the Community Benefits Act, whether it be Crowley Wind or another operator of the port. I urge my fellow counselors to approve this amendment.
Any further discussion? Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hathworth. I just very want to quickly echo what Counselor Jerslow said and appreciate the work that went into the Community Benefit Agreement. It's, it's strong. Uh, it truly is a benefit to the community and I really appreciate, yeah, all the work that went in, went into it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counsel Jerslow's motion for confirmation by roll call vote, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Jerslow?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Marcello?
Yes.
Counsel Prozynski?
Yes.
Counsel Verella?
Yes.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counsel Hathworth?
On Counsel Jerslow's motion for confirmation by roll call vote of the TIF, Madam, I'm sorry. Uh, we have 10 counselors voting, 10 in favor, none opposed. The matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order to authorize the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Beverly and the Town of Danvers for the purpose of utilizing a two, a 2.3 million grant from the Federal Transit Authority to establish a two-year pilot program to implement and operate new regional node-based and flexible stop route transit services for residents of Salem, Beverly, and Danvers.
Counsel Marcello.
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Administration and Finance co-posted.
Counsel Marcello moves to refer to the Committee on Administration and Finance co-posted with the Committee of the Whole. Under discussion?
Um, just that there was a lot in this filing and a lot of numbers and I think that administration and finance would be a, a good landing place for this.
Any further discussion? On Counsel Marcello's motion to refer to the Committee on Administration and Finance, all those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Mayor's informational page, none. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hathworth. Uh, City of Salem, March 14th, regular meeting, uh, ordered that the monthly financial reports here today, July 2023 through December 2023 and January 2024, uh, be received and filed and I move for adoption.
Counsel Merkel moves for adoption. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On the order that the monthly financial reports, July through December and January, be received and filed, all those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Committee reports. Counsel Merkel.
Uh, thank you, President Hathworth. Uh, City of Salem in City Council, March 14th, 2024, the Committee of Administration and Finance co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the matter of resolution for a tax increment financing for Chambers Property Holdings LLC for a restaurant at 65 Washington Street, has considered this said matter and would recommend adoption by roll call vote.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Report is accepted. And on the recommendation, under discussion.
Uh, thank you, President Hathworth. Uh, yes, so the meeting uh we had was for the proposal for the tax increment finance agreement for the Chambers Group, for the commercial space at 65 Washington Street. It is for a five-year TIF, and it is for the difference between the base value and the end value of the project. We had in attendance Mayor Pagallo, Kate Newell Smith, our principal planner, and Chef Aaron Chambers, and Shayna Chambers as well. And we had a very informative meeting with Ms. Newell Smith, gave an excellent presentation and answered questions. Mayor Pagallo spoke in favor, and Allison Cafrey, the Executive Director of Root, spoke positively about the partnership they have with the Chambers and the current restaurant, which is at the current restaurant, Settlers. The counselors asked questions about TIFs, who qualifies, the benefits to the Salem community, why it's been vacant, and things of that nature. And we heard public comment as well from several people, both in support and against. Also, this meeting was for two agenda items for the TIF. This first vote is for the resolution to allow, and the next item is the TIF agreement approval. And this vote, this was voted in committee, two to one, in favor of sending it back to the full council with a positive recommendation for adoption.
I will also note that Counselor Varela has recused himself. Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the, Counselor Morcillo.
Thank you. So I, I want to kind of follow up on some stuff from the meeting. I have to say that I entered the meeting not necessarily in favor for a couple of reasons, one of which was the developer was given a TIF, and so that's, that's kind of like where my head was at. But we need to separate the, the project, the, the company that built the building from the company who's buying the space and trying to build a business right now. TIFs are only available for people who own property. That's one thing. I know that a lot of people in, in the city have asked why other restaurants haven't, haven't been granted a TIF. One is because they haven't asked, and two is because many of them lease their property. So it's not, it's not apples and apples. The, if from our backup, what we were given was that there was an approximation of $31,000 to $32,000 that, that the city would not be receiving, right? That was kind of the difference over five years for the TIF. One of the questions that I did ask, though, was about the meals tax. And at the meeting, I did ask the, the owner of the space how much he expects to, to pay in meals tax, and basing that on how much his current, his current restaurant pays. And at the meeting, he said that it was about $90,000 that his current restaurant pays in meals tax, and then he expects, you know, conservatively, maybe $150,000 in meals tax from the new restaurant. And so I followed up with Anna Friedman to understand of that meals tax, what the city actually saw. And so the meals tax is a tax on top of the state's meals tax, and so the City of Salem gets 0.75% of the 7% collected. So based on that, Anna said that probably his current location paying $90,000 pays the city about $9,643 in meals tax a year. And so if you conservatively think that, you know, that, that number will go up in the new restaurant, and say, let's say, $12,000, the city would be seeing in new meals taxes from day one when that, when that restaurant starts operating, which is much more over five years than the $32,000 that we would not be seeing in, in the property tax. And the thing is that all of those monies, property tax and what we get from meals tax, all goes to the bottom line of creating a budget and reducing the amount that, that residents pay, or calculating how much residents pay. So even though, and my, so what I'm trying to say is that I came out of it in favor of this TIF, if it helps them get going in this space, utilizing this space has been empty for a couple of years, and, and glaringly empty. It's the first, one of the first things you see when you get off the train, is an empty space in a brand-new building. And so this restaurant will activate that area of Salem. It will bring in new meals taxes from day one to the city that does offset the, the residential and commercial tax rate for everyone. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Davis.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Just wanted to, to first of all, say that I also felt the presentation was very helpful, gave me a lot of clarity about what a TIF agreement is and, and kind of where the administration stands and when it makes sense, when it doesn't. I continue to feel very conflicted. I think there's two kind of hesitations for me. One being, still being unclear of just the kind of broader community benefit for something like this. I watched this body approve TIFs before I was a counselor that had to do with climate resiliency and affordable housing, both of which I thought made a lot of sense, and this, this feels different, so I'm still struggling with that a bit. And the second being, just wrapping my head around the precedent that's set that I'm concerned about, a place that is essentially, there's price gouging going on, in my opinion, and there is a business that was essentially not set up for success, and I, I am concerned about the city kind of footing the bill for that. But conflicted, of course, because there was a lot of great information that was given to us about the relationship with Root, and then the jobs that are being created, and, you know, the, the numbers add up, and it makes sense, so I, I continue to feel conflicted.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I struggled with this as well, as I was the no vote, I wasn't quite there yet, because generally, as Counselor Davis, David had also expressed, generally, my go-to for TIFs and TIs is when it's a benefit to addressing our housing crisis and climate crisis. And I also do find it troubling that a space was created with such little infrastructure and a high price tag that causes it to sit vacant for years when local businesses were interested in the space and couldn't afford it. And I'm hoping the city takes steps to try to prevent this in the future. At the end of the day, I do want to utilize the tools we have to maintain a thriving downtown and help new businesses get started. I, I am clear and appreciate Counselor Morcillo's explanation of the fact that we're not losing, you know, this is increased revenue with the space being utilized. And we also, during the meeting, we had heard from a representative of the residents of that building that they supported, and we had also heard about their partnership with Root. And I'd like to elaborate also on having concerns about a fair process based on owners and renters, and I had actually reached out to Ms. Newell Smith for some more clarity on that. And she is here tonight, if, if, you know, we had questions, but the response was that it can be an option for renters taking on build-out costs if the TIF is between the city and the owner and the leasing. So there is some path forward for that, as I continue to try to take a deep dive into this, because like I said, I was conflicted. And another point I'd like to make is, I hope we can help spread the word moving forward to new businesses. You know, I'm, I'm concerned, you know, one business doesn't get, get it because they didn't even know about it. So I, I'd like to see, yeah, if we can, can figure out how some more businesses can inquire with the city about this option, you know, with the high cost of starting a new business. So I just wanted to, to offer those perspectives, which get me to the point of that I will support this tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I wasn't at the meeting, and appreciate all the good work by the committee. One of the values of our process with TIFs and, and TIs is that every single one of them comes before us as a specific, unique consideration. We haven't actually really done for climate, the Crowley one was really an economic driver, and, and, and that will benefit the city that way. But I do want to, you know, bring up one benefit for the community if we approve this TIF, and that is, several counselors have mentioned the empty space, and empty spaces don't generally employ people in the community. And having a business that's successful and employs people, whether they're from our community or elsewhere, is really important. And, you know, just want to remind people that this coming Thursday, next Thursday, we have a seminar about workers' rights in regard to wage theft, and you don't have to be a worker, you could be an establishment, an owner of an establishment, to come and learn about, you know, the best practices for treating employees. But I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of this, because I think we really are, we really strongly need to think about how we diversify the employment in our city, and this is a possibility to employ more people, hopefully, who are from Salem. Thank you.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I have nothing absolutely new to say to any of what has been already said, but I did feel the need to also voice my own conflict and process as well. I will also be voting in favor of this tonight for all of the reasons that have been raised by our colleagues, and, and, and I do believe that, I do believe that it is not the business owner's fault that this, that this space was built the way that it was. I have real problems with that, and I just want to echo Counselor Merkel's comments around how we move forward in approving designs that are giant, empty spaces that offer absolutely nothing to business owners locally who could afford to move in there without support such as this. I consider this a, a good, shared investment, but I will also say some of my concerns are that a lot of this stuff about how it works successfully is contingent on the fact that, that these folks are, are local, they're ingrained in our community, they're great business owners, they're good community partners, and they manage their trash across the street. Someday, that may change, and we will have a space and that, and that location that is built out beautifully for beautiful restaurant, and it will always have to be a restaurant. I hope that you're very, very successful, and you, and you're there for many, many, many years to come. But I do think that it is incumbent upon us when we review these kinds of projects that we think really long-term, well beyond all of us here and our terms and our lives. I mean, that is, that's, that's part of the service that, that, that we take on when we take on this role. And I just think that it would be irresponsible to not address some of the, the elephants that have been so eloquently outlined by my colleagues. But as I said, in favor tonight, but wanted to go on the record. Thanks.
Any further discussion? On the recommendation for adoption of the resolution by roll call vote, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
No.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Morcillo.
Yes.
Counselor Prozynski.
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
Yes. On adoption of the, of the recommendation, we have nine counselors voting, eight in favor, and one opposed, and one recused, matter carries. Further committee reports. Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. City of Salem in City Council, March 14th, 2024, the Committee of Administration and Finance co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom it was referred the matter tax increment financing agreement with Chambers Property Holdings LLC and Chambers Restaurant Coop LLC for a restaurant at 65 Washington Street, has considered said matter and would recommend adoption by roll call vote.
I will note that Counselor Varela has rejoined us and then re-recused himself. On acceptance of the report, all those in favor, all opposed, report is accepted. Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. As I previously stated, this meeting was for the proposed TIF for the Chambers Group. The previous vote was for the resolution, and this is for the TIF agreement approval.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the recommendation for adoption of the TIF by roll call vote, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
No.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Morcillo.
Yes.
Counselor Prozynski.
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
Yes. Adoption of the recommendation, we have nine counselors voting, one recused, we have eight in favor and one opposed, the matter carries. Further committee reports. Counselor Morcillo.
Thank you, President. City of Salem in City Council, March 14th, 2024, Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the matter of discussing of right on red ordinance with traffic lights, for traffic lights in northwest Salem, has considered said matter and would recommend that the matter remain in committee.
I will also note that Counselor Varela has rejoined us. On acceptance of the report, all those in favor, all opposed, report is accepted. Counselor Morcillo on the recommendation.
Under discussion. Thank you, President. This was a continuation of our conversation on the right on red issue in northwest Salem, as it said, and we are scheduling our next meeting after the Traffic and Parking, Traffic and Parking Commission is done with their review of all of the lights. They're going to present an entire, like, ordinance change for all, for all of the changes that come out of their commission. They started last night and ended after two-plus hours, and they still have the 114 corridor, basically, so, for all of you who want to join. And they are taking public comment.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the recommendation, the matter remain in committee, all was in favor, all opposed, matter carries. Further committee reports. Counselor Morcillo.
Thank you, President. City of Salem in City Council, March 14th, 2024, Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the matter of discussing of city ordinance, Chapter 2, Section 2-1688, City Council to authorize the mayor to enter into a 20-year agreement with Framingham-based Amoresco, an energy services company, had considered said matter and would recommend adoption.
On acceptance of the report, all was in favor, all opposed, the report is accepted. On the recommendation, under discussion.
Thank you, President. We had a very informative meeting with a lot of city staff here as backup, but I think a lot of questions were answered beforehand. This is a 20-year agreement that is required when you, when you make this kind of a, a purchase. I'm so out of my league here. And it's specifically for the Bates School and the Witchcraft Heights School, for control systems and a new boiler at the Bates School.
Any further discussions? Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Yeah, I had a few questions that were answered specifically, and this is for the general public as well. We can opt out of this, for example, if there is a more efficient system that has incentives attached to it, we can actually opt out of it. And the warranty, well, there's a guarantee of how much output the systems will produce, but as long as we're in contract with Amoresco, the warranty will guarantee output. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Harvey.
Yeah, I also had a few questions for them. Thank you, President. In regards to the BMS system that they were installing, whether it was compatible with future things, and Amoresco is a great company. I don't see a reason why we should not do this, exactly for the reason like Counselor Cohen just said, we do have the option to opt out after five years or continue on with it. And in regards to the schools, it is for the heating and the boilers at the Bates and the roof at the Witchcraft, but it also, they, they look into other things to help the city conserve energy as this contract runs with the warranty and everything else. So I'm definitely in favor of this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the recommendation for adoption, authorizing the mayor to enter into 20-year agreement, all was in favor, all opposed, matter carries. Further committee reports. Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. City of Salem in City Council, March 14th, 2024, the Committee on Community and Economic Development co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the matter of haunted happenings, 2023, issues a debriefing, has considered said matter and would recommend report from the mayor be received and filed, and the matter remain in committee.
On acceptance of the report, all was in favor, all opposed, report is accepted. On the recommendation, under discussion.
Thank you, President Hapworth. So obviously, this is Counselor Stott's committee, and she's not here tonight, so it will be taken in place as a member of the committee. So, yeah, we had a very great meeting at the Community Life Center. We had not only the mayor and his administration, but our department heads and many stakeholders in the crowd as well. We definitely had some great dialogue when it comes to the inner workings of the City of Salem. And I have to say, this being the second meeting that we have held when it comes to the community impact and the economic development of haunted happenings, I really think that this is a fantastic way to really show our residents that we're trying to address the concerns when it comes to our residents, our businesses, and going forward, how we can make haunted happenings better. The reason that this is still in committee, we felt that this meeting was really, you know, to start, was really about an informational aspect of this, and I really don't think that we had enough time to really address the public when it comes to questions of haunted happenings. So for that matter, I would like this to remain in committee and look forward to the continued conversation when it comes to haunted happenings and how we can make it better for all. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Prozynski.
I just want to echo what, thank you, Mr. President, just want to echo what Counselor Varela said. This, this meeting was too short for everybody to pitch in what they wanted to say. I know the presentations by the, all the departments were very, very well-done, very good presentations, and we all got an idea on what everybody did and how much it cost. But the other side of it was, it was such a long meeting, it did not give the public the opportunity to, to give us feedback. And I think that's probably one of the most important parts of having one of these gatherings, so that we can discuss what we did and then get the public feedback on what they feel we did right and what they feel, we feel that they, that we did wrong. I know that there were quite a few people that wanted to have public comment during that time when it was held at the CLC, but they didn't get the opportunity to, only because it went about two and a half hours long, and people were just, just at their wits end by the end of the night. So I'm looking forward to a robust public comment period when it does come back into committee and that it get publicized vigorously, so that people can have the opportunity to come in and, and say what they'd like to say about how we put Halloween together. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I'd also like to, you know, encourage the public to always send public comment, where I receive feedback on October pretty much all year round, and it's always especially helpful, too, in real time. So keep those comments coming. If someone sees too late that there was a survey or, you know, an opportunity, please find us, please email. I know the mayor's office also keeps, keeps the bulk of, you know, October feedback, you know, in, in one place to reference, as they have meetings moving forward throughout the year about Haunted Happenings, they reference those. So yes, please, anytime, we're all reachable, and it's helpful throughout the year.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the recommendation that the report be received and filed, and the matter remain in committee, all those in favor, all opposed. The matter carries. Counsel Verella. Sorry. Further committee reports, Counsel Verella.
Thank you, President Hapworth. City of Salem and City Council, March 14, 2024. The Committee on Government Services, co-hosted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the matter of creating an elections commission and the process involved, has considered such matter would remain in committee.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor, all opposed. Report is accepted. On the recommendation, under discussion.
Thank you, President Hapworth. So this is, I believe, our third meeting when it comes to elections commission. Again, I think that we want to get this right. This is a very important discussion we're having. And what has come to light is the changes from the document, which mostly are more consistent and mirror what is within 5116A when it comes to the language, when it comes to representation from both political parties. We added a section, section two about the elections, the elections department shall educate our constituency when it comes to voting, as well as, and the biggest change we have, which is why this is changing, is the passage of this, of this home rule petition. What we're looking to do is have this enacted in January, January 1, 2025. So for that reason, after talking to the mayor, the last thing we want is to enact something tonight when it comes to a home rule petition and have the mayor veto it. We really need the mayor on board, and because we're heading into budget season, I really feel that we can have a thoughtful conversation when it comes to fiscal year 2025 on the personnel needed when it comes to our elections department, because if we do go through with this, our Honorable City Clerk, Eileen Simons, and Maureen Fisher, our Assistant City Clerk, are a part of elections right now, and that would be a huge void missing. When it comes to the mayor and our budget, we do need to, you know, not only is he obligated to fully fund the elections department, we need to make sure that the mayor can do it and that we're being mindful of the budget. So for that reason, I would like to hold off on any kind of vote with a home rule petition. I am confident that the legislature should give us something back within a reasonable session, only because what we're asking for is very consistent with the general law when it comes to an elections commission. So I don't foresee this being a very drawn-out, long process with, with the House and the Senate. So therefore, I think we have a little bit of time to be thoughtful about this conversation. So again, looking forward to the continuing of this conversation so that we can get this right for the future. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the recommendation to remain in committee, all those in favor, all opposed, and that remains in committee. Communications from city officials.
We have from Patricia Kellher, the preservation plan is submitting a preservation restriction agreement for St. Peter's Church as a condition of the CPA funding. The document has been reviewed by the Massachusetts Historical Commission and signed by the parish.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President, President Hapworth. I move for adoption.
Counsel Merkel moves for adoption. Under discussion.
Thank you, President Hapworth. This is a procedural requirement. It's being executed as a condition when receiving CPA funding. And if anybody wants to know more about it, there's 29 pages of information on this in the backup documentation.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the preservation restriction agreement for St. Peter's Church as a condition of CPA funding, Counsel Merkel's motion for adoption, all those in favor, all opposed. The matter carries. Petitions.
New petition from Joe Ferrari from the Salem Film Fest to explore a greater partnership with the City of Salem, including financial support for not only the Salem Film Fest, but all other festivals in Salem.
Counsel Watsonfeld.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Community and Economic Development.
Counsel Watsonfeld moves to refer to the Committee on Community and Economic Development. Under discussion.
Thank you, President Hapworth. No real discussion, except to say that the petition came in from Mr. Ferrari, who is the director of the Salem Film Festival. As anyone listening in at this point in the night probably knows already, Salem has a number of festivals that come through and to and from us as a city on an annual basis, and it sounds like there's an opportunity to have a broader conversation around what he defines as greater partnership here. I'd be curious, I'm looking forward to hearing what his further thoughts are on that in the committee meeting, and I'd like to make sure that this is co-posted with the Committee of the Whole. Thank you.
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. This is one of the best events anywhere. If you haven't been, there's fun films, there's a lot of social justice films. We never miss it. And if you haven't already bought your tickets, it's online, and there's trailers for all of them, and many of the movies have someone affiliated with the movie in the audience, and you won't be sorry if you go to five or six movies. Thank you.
Counsel Verella.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I'd just like to commend Mr. Ferrari for bringing this in, formerly living in the city of Santa Barbara for about five, six years. The Salem, or the Santa Barbara Film Festival is a huge economic driver for the city, and it was only because the city was overwhelmingly involved in the process. It really, you know, being here in Salem, you know, we're not just about Halloween here. We're about our arts and culture, and local film festivals do really ignite and initiate conversations with smaller film and producers with really personal stories. So I really think that this is something thoughtful that's been brought in and could be another way to just show everyone that Salem is something more unique than just Halloween. Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Also want to say, I went to the trailer reveal party, which is also a really fun Salem annual event, and I don't think in our conversations here we've mentioned the date for the public. So I just wanted to mention that the Salem Film Festival is coming up very soon. It is March 21 to the 24th. So I just want that for, for the public's information. Thank you.
Salem Film Fest.
Ours is in the original Salem. Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the motion to refer the petitions, the Committee on Community and Economic Development, co-hosted with the Committee of the Whole, all those in favor, all opposed. The matter carries. Further petitions.
We have a request from Saskia Van James to grow to consume for the Salem City Council to adopt an ordinance for American Freedmen Commission and to meet with the council to hold educational workshops on transitional justice and American freedom in history.
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. We have tasked Salem's Race Equity Commission with addressing issues of race in our community, and they have been discussing a potential Freedmen Commission for a while. And at the point that they have a proposal for the city, great. I am moving to table this.
I second that motion.
Counsel Cohen moves to table, seconded by Counsel Verella. Because it's being tabled, there is no further discussion. On Counsel Cohen's motion to table, all those in favor, all opposed. The matter carries. Further petitions.
We have a list of public guides.
Counsel Marcello.
Thank you, President. I move that these be granted.
Counsel Marcello moves these be granted. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On Counsel Marcello's motion that the public guide licenses be granted, all those in favor, all opposed. The matter carries. Further petitions.
We have four, four claims.
Counsel Marcello.
Thank you, President. I move that these be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs.
Counsel Marcello moves to refer to the Committee on Community, on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs. All those in favor, all opposed. The matter carries. Further petitions.
We have a drainier contractor operator license application from Tufts Construction.
Counsel Marcello.
Thank you. I move that this be granted.
Counsel Marcello moves these be granted. All those in favor, all opposed. The matter carries. Unfinished business.
We have a second passage of a traffic ordinance amending school zones.
Counsel Marcello.
Thank you. I move for adoption for second passage.
Counsel Marcello moves for adoption for second passage. Any discussion? On the motion for adoption for second passage, all those in favor, all opposed. The matter carries. Counsel Prozynski.
Move for adjournment.
Counsel Prozynski moves for adjournment. All those in favor, all opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.